Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the advertised time and place for the March 20th, 2025 Planning Board Meeting. Please join the board in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Welcome, everyone. We have no public hearing tonight, so we're going to get right into discussion items. Number one item is Freebird 23 LLC Farm Stand with Heather.
Good afternoon, everyone, for the record. Heather Tojanski, planner for the town. We do have the applicants here if they want to come on. And just state your names for the record.
How you doing?
Good, yeah?
Hello.
Hi.
Michelle.
Give us a sec, guys.
I'm David. Thank you. And this is my wife, Michelle.
Hello.
Hello.
So the property, more particularly identified as Suffolk County Tax of Number 600-75-1-1.2. It's about 11 acres on the north side of Route 25A, meeting River. If you're familiar with the area, just across street from CBS, just east of where Senor Taco is. The applicants, the things would like to put a farm stand and some greenhouses and a small storage container on the property. And they're also making other improvements, including a 25-foot-wide gravel driveway and access aprons on State Route 25A. The property does currently have the development rights owned by Suffolk County. Liber 13275, dated December 10th, 2024. So they do need approval for any of these improvements prior to, you know, getting building permits for them. They've informed me that Suffolk County Planning, sorry, Suffolk County Farmland Commission is actually meeting today at 5:00 to, you know, review and hopefully approve what they've proposed. So the proposed farm stand is actually a 10-by-40 cover truck, so it'll be movable. I'm assuming, you know, similar to the farm stand that they have up on meeting River Manor Road. The storage container will be to keep any sort of agricultural products, you know, locked up at night, and then the greenhouses will be used for growing. The parcel has been and is currently engaged in bona fide agricultural production. Obviously, the aerial view, it's, you know, you could tell that it's tilted, but I took a Google Street View, and I've passed this property so many times. The things were previously leasing it for agricultural production from the prior owners, the Gonzellas, and they now own the property. I referred this over to Ag Advisory, and they approved the farm stand as proposed at their March 10th meeting. So I'd like to have this on for resolution for approval, subject to any conditions or changes that Suffolk County would want them to make. And then because this is on a state road, I referred it over to DOT. They're going to need a permit just for the aprons, and I think you've already started a conversation in the application process with them. So any details or changes that DOT is going to want that is built into the resolution. The only concern that I found, the striping for the left-hand turning lane going into CBS starts around where their easterly apron is proposed. So my recommendation, similar to what I think we did for the lavender farm stand on State Route 25 in Cowerton, was, you know, asking them to do right-in, right-out only there. If somebody wants to make a left into the site, I feel like the entrance closer to Senor Taco would be a little bit easier. Obviously, this is all up to DOT, so if it's not something that they're going to require, I'm fine with that. It's just a suggestion that I'm making.
I had only one question. Are they required to have a handicap stall?
Um, I think they would have to provide. I mean, would you be okay with providing one improved stall on site? Farm stands don't really fall into any categories for parking schedules concerned. I think the Manor Lab Farm Stand did provide one stall. I mean, based on the proposed size of the farm stand, I think they're only required, if we're looking at the parking code, they're only required to have two parking stalls. And I scaled this out. I mean, even though they're not delineated, there's more than enough parking here for, I think, 40 cars. So I mean, if you, if you would be able to add a handicap stall, I guess proximate to where the farm stand would be. I can give you the information on that.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
It really, DOT has to be the one to decide on whether you have an in-and-out or right-on.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, it's something that I just picked up on. You know, I'm familiar with the area. And even if we were to require, or DOT requires a write-in, only we sort of know that people don't always adhere to sign restrictions. So I just wanted to bring it up so that everybody's aware. And if DOT wants them to do that or make modifications planned, it's really, it's up to them. So that's why the resolution is subject to both Suffolk County farmland and also DOT. The town engineer wanted some specifications on the gravel, and you have already worked on providing that. So I don't expect any other hiccups. It's really, you know, it's seasonal. It's not going to be a huge farm stand. Again, it's a movable truck, so people...
Are you going to keep the trailer in the back?
Yeah. Yeah, I use that for straw storage.
Is that, is that stone on pallets? Is that your property or next door?
That's next door.
Next door, okay.
Yeah, we're, we're right to the west of that between there and Senor Taco.
I just had two questions.
Will the public have access to those greenhouses?
As of now, no.
No.
Do you intend to later, you know, put something else on the land that would attract public, you know, more, you know, people?
Yeah, I mean, if anything else...
Not really. I mean, most of our other, or the rights are sold on this parcel, so we're kind of limited to what you can and cannot do.
Right, no, I know that.
Any other, like, structures, even if they're ag structures, would need, they need to go back to Suffolk County for?
Farming Committee.
And sub-probably subsequently come back to us as well. But this is really sort of, I'd say, accessory to your main farm stand that's on Middle Country Road, and that's where the bulk of the sort of, like, ag tours and stuff happens.
The reason for my question was, was it going to be an extension of what was on Route 25?
Right. Well, actually, I'll give you a quick backstory. My daughter is 16, so she's really taken a liking to the farm. And for us, we don't want to push her away. So we're giving her the option. She's actually going to run this stand this summer. And then...
So she can carry her, kind of give her something that she can...
Correct. That's the main drive behind this.
Got it.
Oh, I think you answered my question, the same as George's. But as far as snow fences go, don't they usually have snow fences in these areas? Would that interrupt?
The state puts it up, but they come in the gate, they put it up, and then they take it down.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no issues there.
Yeah, so they're just proposing, they're going to move, there's an existing deer fence that they're going to move back, and then they'll throw up a split rail fence, I guess, you know, sort of as a, just to delineate. Yeah. And then when the state comes in, they put the snow fencing up, just like I think the town roads, the highway department does the snow fence.
Right. I've seen all your other, I live not far away, and everything you guys touch, it looks beautiful, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've been blessed. Work hard, but you get blessed, you know?
So if the board's amenable, you know, the resolution is subject to both DOT and Suffolk County farmland, but...
Quick question, Dave. Were you guys going to do strawberry picking or pumpkin picking?
That's not an option right now. Not, not, as of now, I'm not going to say that's not going to change in the future at some point, but right now, we have a lot of irons in the forest, so we're just trying...
He's doing it next door.
Yeah, and he's got strawberry picking next door.
Anything else, gentlemen?
Nope.
Okay, we'll have a vote later. Good luck.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for having time.
You have to run into Suffolk County now?
Five blocks.
You have to go there.
We're going to go after dinner, Dave. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, discussion item number two with Greg Bergman, Points East LLC minus subdivision. What do you got going on, Greg?
Just give me one sec. So I did inform applicant of this meeting. He was supposed to attend. I mean, I can present it quickly. You know, I do have my report. There's any outstanding questions from the board, we can wait to have them answered until the applicant's present.
Greg, I just noticed it.
AstroTurf, let's talk about that later.
AstroTurf.
Oh, okay. Just noticed it.
Can we just zoom out a little bit on the AstroTurf? A little more. Thank you. Good, thank you. All right. So we have received a minor subdivision application seeking approval to subdivide an existing 2.05-acre parcel of land and create a four-lot minor subdivision utilizing Town of Riverhead transfer of development rights to achieve the desired development yield. We have received an existing condition survey, an as-of-right yield map, and a TDR yield map, which is currently on the table right now, the board's looking at. In terms of SECRE, the proposed minor subdivision is a type-two action under our town code as the proposed subdivision meets all the dimensional requirements and would be precluded from further subdivision based on our dimensional requirements. I do note that although it's a type-two action and requires no further environmental review, the subject property is located within a potentially archaeologically sensitive area. So I did refer that application to SHIPO. We received comments back from them, which I'll get to shortly. In terms of the site location, zoning and surrounding area, Suffolk County tax map is Suffolk County 600-84-1-6. Again, it's 2.05 acres. It's located on the south side of Middle Road, within the Residence A40 zoning use district. It's approximately 1,300 feet of the east of the intersection of Middle Road and Ostrander Avenue. The property is presently improved with a two-story, single-family residence, which there are no records currently maintained by the Riverhead Building Department on that house, likely predates the establishment of zoning in the town, meaning it was built prior to 1965. I do recommend that the property owner make an application to the Building Department for a letter of pre-existing use just to memorialize that fact.
That's going to, that house is going to stay there?
I believe that house is intended to stay. I don't want to speak on behalf of the applicant, but again, I can, we'll get him before the board to clarify any questions you may have. So access to the site is currently taken by a dirt and stone driveway, which is located to the west of the existing residence, which is shown in Figure 3 on page three of my staff report. Surrounding area is surrounded by residential and agricultural uses, as a number of retirement communities on the north side of Middle Road, as well as assorted single-family residences. Regarding the use of transfer of development rights to increase the development yield of the property, it's permitted to essentially double the as-of-right development density within the R.A. 40 zoning district pursuant to Town Code 301-208B. The Residence A40 has a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet. With the use of TDRs, you can increase the density down to, no instance shall lot yield exceed one lot per 20,000 square feet. So again, you can essentially double the density. I did note, and it's sort of a little bit of a, little bit of an anomaly, there's no specified dimensional regulations within our code when an applicant is proposing to utilize TDRs to do a increased-density subdivision. But I did clip out the dimensional regulations for our residential zoning districts. The code does contain what's called a workforce housing option, which gets you down to a 20,000-square-foot lot size, and that contains its own specific dimensional regulations. For the purpose of this application, I'm recommending that the board apply those dimensional regulations to the subdivision. That's something we're going to work on separately with the town board, just to sort of codify those different dimensional regulations.
So how many TDRs are they purchasing?
It would require two.
Two, okay.
Two TDRs. And they are, they have begun discussions. There's an applicant who has TDR credits. They're going to negotiate with that applicant for the use of those TDRs. The science, the signature and the filing of the map, they'll have to make a separate application for the use of those TDRs. So that will have to take place before the signature and the filing of the map. The board has seen that recently. We've done TDRs in the Villas at Roanoke subdivision, which is now known as Seacrest Estates. And we also did a TDR map up on Pier Road, up on the west, Pier Avenue, on the west side of the road, within the last year or so. In terms of development yield, the lots on the TDR yield map, Lot 1 is 20,118 square feet. Lot 2 is 20,611 square feet. Lot 3 is 22,486 square feet. And Lot 4 is 26,270 square feet. So the property is located within the Riverhead Water District, and there is currently an easement, which encumbers a 15-foot-wide stretch of land on the west side of the property, which is to the benefit of the Town of Riverhead for the purposes of laying, maintaining, operating, repairing, and removing water lines, trunks, trunk mains, hydrants, and necessary water district appurtenances under and through the property. That easement was established as a result of an eminent domain proceeding initiated by the town in 1990. The easement does reserve to the owner of the property the rights to pave at the owner's cost and expense the surface of that easement area for ingress and egress purposes. However, it requires that any pavement shall be done with vituminous or like material and not with concrete. So basically asphalt or some type of stone blend material. In the event that the town is required to disturb those paved areas, the town would be then required to repave those areas.
Is that an active water main?
I, I believe it's a transmission line. I did, the plans were referred...
I mean, there's water in it.
Yes. Yes. So I did speak to the Riverhead Water District. They did receive a copy of the plans. They are working with the applicant. They're trying to determine the feasibility of the applicant being able to tap off individual service mains to the houses off of that transmission line, as well as the feasibility. I'll get to it a little bit later, but they will be required to put a fire hydrant along that common driveway, just based on fire code requirements and the distance to the nearest hydrant. So the Riverhead Water District is currently investigating the feasibility of all of those requirements.
The water main, does it extend down to Middle Road?
Yes, and we did speak earlier. I can't speak to why the map shows the water line terminating about right there, but our GIS records do indicate, yes, that there is a 16-inch transmission line coming from the tank on Route 58 that connects all the way to Middle Road.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah. So again, just touching on the potentially archaeologically sensitive area, I did refer the application to SHIPO through their cultural resource information system. Received correspondence back from SHIPO on March 7th indicating that no archaeological and/or historic resources would be impacted by the project. I got comments back from the Riverhead Highway Department. They're going to look for a standard road opening permit. We got comments back from the Fire Marshal. They deal with turnaround. So when driveways in excess of 500 feet in length, they'll need a required turnaround. That'll meet fire code. Driveways in excess of 500 feet in length and less than 20 feet in width need to provide turnouts along the length of that driveway. And again, the fire hydrant must be provided within 600 feet as measured along that apparatus access road. So I did note, this is just a, you know, subdivision plat for the purposes of review. I did note that the map would need to be amended to include a common driveway easement, which would need meets and bounds descriptions. And we're going to need a engineered grading and drainage plan for that common driveway. The grade of the property typically does slope down towards Middle Road, so we want to make sure that any surfaces, they capture their runoff and they're adequately maintained, and they're not putting...
It could impact, since you have to have a turnaround, it could impact Lot Number 4.
So the, it wouldn't necessarily affect the lot size. That common driveway would just be an easement, so the area of the driveway and the turnaround wouldn't subtract from the lot size. It would just be encumbered by a, you know, an access easement. But it wouldn't shrink the size of the property, because again, we're not...
Well, you have, if they had to give it up, that has, that has property that they can give up, if they had to give it up, and still meet 20,000.
Correct. But for a minor subdivision, they're not constructing a town roadway, so this would be a common driveway. There would be a note on the plans that it would not be for dedication to the town. So they would never be dedicating anything. It would just be part of their property that would be encumbered by the common driveway easement. I did refer the application to the Suffolk County Planning Commission. We're waiting on a response from the Planning Commission. I did also refer the map to the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. So I do have a resolution on for the board to consider to schedule a public hearing for this application, which would be the second meeting in April. Again, I do apologize for the applicant not being here. He was aware, but if there's any questions that the board has, I can, you know, jot them down and relay them to the applicant to make sure that the board is, you know, comfortable and satisfied with moving forward to the public hearing.
I'd like to, I'd like to see the map amended, certainly to show the turnaround and extend the water main and that, some drainage. Also, there's nothing there on elevations. I don't think the elevations are bad, but I don't know whether it's back to front, left to right. And hopefully, we could have that before the public hearing. Because if not, if they can't, then I would say we're going to have to hold the public hearing open.
All right. So just to clarify, you want to amend the map to show the driveway, turnarounds, drainage, elevations, and the continuation of the water main from Middle Road?
Thank you.
Same concerns I had too, Greg. Now, they don't need to do any curbing at all on a, because it's minor subdivision.
No, so again, it would be a common driveway if not something that is designed to town standards. Obviously, they need to maintain it in stormwater, but it's not something that would be, you know, designed to the Town of Riverhead road and drainage standards.
Will they pave this?
I'm assuming they would pave it.
According to the town requirements?
So again, there's, there's no real town requirements for the common driveway. It's really relying on the state fire code in terms of minimum width, minimum, it needs to be able to hold 82,000 pounds, which is the weight of local fire apparatus, and it needs to be in all-weather condition. So it would likely need to be paved by some surface, but that's why I requested in the report, we need to see paving specifications. We'll have the town engineer look at that and confirm that it does meet those requirements.
Any lighting that has to be required?
There's no street lighting. There's no, you know, there's no municipal lighting that would be installed. Any lighting would be on the single-family residence.
Do we have to approve a yield map for this?
That is, that is a step we've done. So we will, we have a yield map, we'll do a yield approval, and then a TDR approval.
Okay. All righty, thank you, Greg. Let's go to discussion item number three, 940 through 946 West Main Street redevelopment. With you again, Greg.
Hey, boy, how we doing?
Doing good.
How are you? Eddie gets more handsome every day.
Flattery will get you everywhere.
The joke around town is we look like each other.
Just state your names to the record, please.
Frank Fisher.
Ray DeCopp. And Martin Sinalaski. Did it for you, buddy. Thank you. All right.
So this is just a follow-up discussion on the site plan for the redevelopment of the old Blackman site, 940 to 946 West Main Street. This is for a site plan application that's going to demolish the existing structures, construct a new three-story, approximately 153,000-square-foot self-storage building, as well as a one-story, approximately 47,000-square-foot non-nuance tenant rental building, along with related improvements, including parking, paving, drainage, access, and landscaping. Project site is six contiguous parcels of land totaling approximately 5.92 acres. Identified as Suffolk County tax map numbers 600-124-3-1 and 2, 3, 4, and 5, as well as tax map number 600-125-2-5.2. And they're all located within the Platonic River Community Zoning District. We did initiate a secret coordination on November 12th of 2024. It is a type-one action. We distributed secret coordination materials to all the involved agencies. We received responses from the Suffolk County Planning Commission, as well as the New York State Department of Transportation and the Fire Marshal's Office. So what I have is a resolution to assume lead agency and issue a negative declaration. I did fill out the full EAF Parts 2 and 3, again, which is just a determination, you know, a evaluation of the magnitude and significance of the proposed development, as well as the determination of significance. Finishing SECRE will allow the applicant, they do have a pending zoning board of appeals application, and I believe Marty is probably going to speak a little bit about how the plan has been modified as a result of that GBI hearing. So I'll kind of let him.
Wait, first, where is the Blackman Building on this, on the, on...
It's not shown on here.
No, I know that, but where, where is it?
Right about, it's just about in line with where the driveway is located.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's pretty much in the middle there. There's the, the building from the left side is where that, the open area is, the paved area, and then there's the copy place, and then the Blackman, and as you get further east, it's the smaller parcel.
Yeah, okay.
So basically, I actually got one of those, like, getting old moments, because I was writing my notes, and actually, last time we were here was March 21st and 24th. So tomorrow's going to be a year since the...
Happy anniversary.
Since that time, there've been a number of changes that will certainly affect this board that you're aware of. One is you can no longer consider pervious pavers as pervious surface, now considered impervious. We had at that meeting gotten an initial approval from the board to proceed with that, so that was changed. And also, the definition of floor area, you're no longer able to eliminate certain areas when you do your parking calculations. So that's happened during the interim period. We went to the zoning board for a couple of, for three variants. One was the impervious surface, FAR, and landscaped area. It was a very, actually, a very good review, because one of the things that's different in this zone from other zones with impervious surface, which is very important here, is that this zone actually has the, under the site development, and has compliance with the dimensional table, which all of them do, but there's an additional note in this section of the code that says you need 50% landscaped area. And as it turns out in our discussions with the zoning board, zoning board attorney, et cetera, it was really brought to our attention that that was really a legislative intent of the whole corridor coming from the west into Riverhead. So with that, we had to really go to work, and we did a big revision of the site plan based on that. The first plan that you have on the first page, this one here, is the, basically, the plan we looked at the last time. It has, you know, they have the two driveways, the storage building, the building here. You notice that each building has a driveway wrapping all the way around it on that original plan, and the red line is a reference line, and you'll see why that's there when we go to the next plan. So this was the plan we had looked at originally. When you go to the next plan, the reference line is still there. There's that red reference line, but all of the green is now area that's no longer paved. That is, we reduced the project substantially in terms of all of its impervious surface. And the orange was certain areas that, you know, just in the plan where pervious surfaces were added. But what happened is now, based on the review with, with the zoning board and with Greg, we eliminated totally that need for the variance for the 50% landscaping area. And it's really important, because it, we really brought the project physical compliance with the intent of that corridor. It was really a very good couple of meetings, and we got a lot of assistance from planning, and it worked out really well. And then the, the last copy here is just the same plan that has the color on it, but it's a little bit clearer, and I just want to note the changes. On this plan, you still have two driveways, okay, that enter into the site. On the storage building, that basically stayed the same. It didn't change really much at all. The storage building loops around, all the way around. We did flip the driveway and the parking in the front of the building, but generally, that stayed the same. The building number two, to the west, you come in, and as you come in, you're going to come in, and there'll be like a directory sign there, because... to come in and there'll be like a directory sign there because they have a shared cross-access between the two properties. So you'll come in, that'll be a nice landscaped area with a directory. You go left, there's parking for the public that's going to come into the front of the building, and then a loop around the back with parking along the back and access to the overhead doors in the back for bringing material in. And then we added a cross-access back here that would be controlled with a gate that would be tied into the Knox box that the storage facility already had. The Fire Marshal wanted a knock box, so they turned the key, all of these gates open, so they have full access around the site. They basically have a figure eight around both buildings. So those were the major changes there. The big change was on the building to the left. We no longer have the drive all the way around. We eliminated some footage. We now have the ramp down to the basement on the other side. And we also defined better what the use is. The use in the code was non-nuance industry. Really, the way that this is set up is to have a shop, not a shop, but a location in the front where there's merchandise, let's say, whatever the product is that people are involved with. Example would be, let's say prefab fireplaces, and they'd have a little showroom. The upper area, the mezzanine, they'd have their office area, you know, where they would do administrative, and the back area would all be the warehousing of all the stuff. So with that, we eliminated any of the areas that we were looking to take out of the parking schedule. We're parking for the entire building, but before, we were using the 1 to 300 for that area in the back, assuming there might have been other uses back there, but based on the definition of the use, that really is warehousing and storage. So we adjusted.
With the changes from the first plan to the second plan, do you still require a relief from the zoning board of appeals?
We no longer require the landscaping area. We do require the impervious. That's really a direct result of the change in the code, though, after we submitted. If there was still allowed those pavers to be considered pervious, we wouldn't have required that variance, and so it changed. But we did go from originally when we were here, the overall development of the site, and this is where Greg really explained well how they went through the change on the code, because really is, you know, pervious, impervious, like Greg said, it's really, it's development, whether it's you're parking on pavers, you're parking on asphalt, it still appears as development. So that's really where the code change came from. We really would, I told my client that we really had to go to work because we couldn't exceed that 50% because that, again, is a legislative intent for the aesthetics of, you know, West Main Street as you're approaching Riverhead. So we completely eliminated that. Now we're just at 50% on the impervious. Originally, the impervious is allowed at 40%. We were seeking 60%. We've reduced the request for the variance in half to, it's now 50%, which is only a, which is only a 25% increase. And the FAR is the same as it was before, but all of the additional floor area that increases the FAR is totally below grade. What's from the grade level up is actually less than what the allowable FAR would be above grade. We have most of that down below. And the zoning board, we had a couple of meetings and they reviewed it. We had a very good review, and they said they just wanted to reserve decision until this board as lead agency had the time.
How many feet of groundwater do you have there?
The groundwater was.
Seventeen.
Yes.
It's high. It's.
You have a test hole on here, and we are above the groundwater with the.
My question is, you got 11-foot ceilings down there. You got ways to get down there. What are you going to do with 56,000-plus feet in the basement, which no one can see? What's that?
That's warehousing.
That's warehouse?
It is, yeah.
Four?
Well, actually, in building one, which is the storage building, you know, the strictly storage building?
Yeah, that building is, that building is, is a total of, I'm looking at building two. Building two is a total of 26,250 feet.
Yes, plus the.
Okay, and you've got, you've got almost 20,000 square feet of cellar.
Yeah, that's correct. So the building two, again, they have, that's for additional product and warehousing in the lower level, and building one, which is a storage, strictly a storage building, it's a self-storage building, there, there was a need established by my client for, one of the things that you really don't have access to with the self-storage buildings, and that is there's a lot of people that have cars that they store. And actually, there are a lot of clients, especially on the East End, who store cars seasonally because they, you know, we're talking, we're not talking about the family car. We're talking about $400, $500, $1,000 vehicles that they use when they're out here in the summer. So there's a real need for vehicle storage at the East End.
Is that what that ramp is for?
That lower level accommodates that. That's really, you can't put that into a storage building the way that they're built. They're more, you know, storage for household stuff, which the upper levels remain. And then the other building, having the, that being more clients or tenants, I should say, with, you know, showrooms and administrative and product, it's just for them to have the ability to have bulk product.
What's the grade on that ramp going down low?
The.
I know, like some of these exotic cars have low front ends and everything.
Yeah, well, what happens is there's actually, the, I would refer back to 48 Cronin, and this has the same exact geometry. What happens is with the approach ramps, you have to start, and I don't have the percentages in my head, but you have to come in and start at a lower slope and then go to a heavier slope, then to a lower slope, then to level. So it's not just a ramp.
Yeah, I understand.
It takes into account clearances and bumpers and all of that as you're going, so.
Thank you.
A quick question. On the other, the other Prince, you had an elevator in one of the buildings? Is that correct?
Well, the storage building will have multiple elevators because the storage, the self-storage building, the way that they work is people pull in, there's, you'll see there's like a covered area on the east side with this door, overhead doors, and they go in and they have carts inside.
Right.
And they'll go in and they'll go up the elevator and they'll go around to where their storage unit is. Some of these units are only, you know, five by five. You know, they just want to store files or whatever. So they go up and they get it and they wheel it back out to their car. So that's the bulk of the storage on the storage buildings, typical to any, most of the other self-storages. I know the one was just done over in Polish Town, very similar. They go in and they go up and grab their stuff. Again, the cars you couldn't have in that model. The cars are strictly downstairs, and the elevator doesn't go downstairs because it doesn't need to, because it's only for the vehicles. The other building is not an elevator. That's, again, is a lower level that's accessible through the ramp and is, again, for storage. So we didn't need the elevators in there. But we do have a fire, one as an additional fire egress on that side that's required, as well as the access where, you know, to get.
So the elevators won't be servicing the cellars at all? They'd just be serviced?
Not on, no, not on either building. The elevators will not service the.
Just for the first, second floors?
Correct. Well, yeah, actually, on the, on the building two, the smaller building, there are no elevators. They only have a mezzanine, which is just like for a small office area, and per code, you don't require the elevator to those smaller areas. And in the storage building, again, that is strictly for the automobiles down below, plus the lower level is accessible through the, you know, through the use of the ramp.
So with the elevator, then, is it going to be in a pit, like a hydraulic piston type of elevator, or it's going to have a mechanical room on top with a, like a pulley?
What we've been using now, we've been using ones with the mechanical room on top. They're actually much more efficient. We were using the piston elevators a lot, but the ones with the mechanical room on top is much better.
Marty, what are the questions I have since we're here for the SECRE? Any environmental problems? Before you even start with the project, what I'm looking for, do you, have you guys done any soil samples on the areas of where you're storing the cars and the, whatever you're storing on east and west of the building? Only for any type of soil contamination from gas or oil?
We did a phase two.
When we bought the property, we did a phase two, came back clean. Yeah, Miller Environmental did it.
So can we request anything else, the results from those, so we can have them? Because you guys, you know, once you start tearing down, you're going to have to remove a lot of that soil. You know, where does that go if it is any type of contamination to it?
No, there's no contamination. We had it all tested already, so you can have results sure.
Well, just to be clear, I think Members on Nicky's concern is, you know, when you purchased the property, there were no vehicles or any kind of, any kind of storage of equipment. I mean, since then, there's been vehicles that Ford does not know what condition they're in.
Oh, yeah, but they're not, there's nothing, there's no leaking vehicles, nothing like that. No, there's no, we didn't bring contaminator. No, I would never do that.
No, no, but that's not my point. The point is, those are not newer vehicles. They are on pervious surfaces on both sides of the building. What I'm saying is you can do very easy soil samples from where the vehicles are.
Yeah, no problem.
And if it's clear, it's fine, and we can move forward. But, you know, I don't want somebody to ask that question later and stop the project while you guys are moving. That's all I'm asking.
I imagine they could do a supplemental because they already did the phase, you know, they did the.
Right, right, to do it in the areas where the vehicles are. But that's all.
Not a problem?
The building two in the back, those are parking spaces?
Correct.
But you also said you're getting deliveries back there. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so there's room enough for trucks to turn around or whatever?
Yeah, they, the, all of the, the back of the building, each of the tenant spaces has an overhead door. So you'd be able to actually pull right into the.
Oh, okay. And that's.
Each unit has an overhead door.
And then your cross-access easement is right there?
Correct.
And why do you need that?
I just, we, we put it in there really for firefighting. So when the people are there, they're not going to utilize that cross-access. It's, you know, the storage unit's pretty much secured.
You want to make them separate?
It's really for the firemen. They come down, they turn that, the Knox box key, it'll open all of the gates, vehicular gates onsite, so they have full maneuverability in the event of a fire.
Well, just for my own clarification, is the intent to merge all six parcels? So when we say cross-access, we're typically talking about between properties. Is the, is the plan, I'm assuming, to, as a function of the site plan, you'd merge the six properties? So it's not necessarily we'd have to file a cross-access easement, it's just an access gate between the two sort of separately functioning sites, even though.
Right.
So the plan is to merge the properties, correct?
Yeah.
Is the plan to make the six parcels one tax map?
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying.
Because they are six different tax maps right now.
Right, yeah, we want to make it, yeah, one line, yeah.
I just use, use the cross-access. It's a word we always use, you know?
So in other words, that has to be done before anything else can be done. Is that correct?
Yeah, we've done that before. We've had applications where parcels need to be merged, and we just require proof of merger prior to the signature of any.
I believe if they're all end up in the same name, it happens automatically through Suffolk County.
If they're, if they're undersized for the zoning, there's a, there's a section of our code that talks about merged by operation of law. That deals for parcels that are undersized within the zoning district. So for example, if you had two lots in a one-acre zone that were each 20,000 square feet that held a common, that had a common property line that were held in the same ownership name, those would get merged by operation if they were. But if they're not undersized for the zoning district, they would not necessarily be merged.
One of the things that I always do, though, also, is I really wouldn't allow my client to merge those properties until he has the approvals, because realistically, going through this process, we're looking to get an approval, and if for some reason there was issues that were brought up that either made the project not feasible or whatever, then, you know, what's there.
You don't want to give up the lot.
The code would stay rightfully, and then the other lots, you could then develop all them individually. So we'll keep that right until we have the approval.
Yeah.
And that's the reason I like to get soil samples, just in case those have a problem and then the middle doesn't, you know?
Anything else?
Yep. Are you in the sewer district?
We are considering an extension of the sewer district for the property. It is not in the sewer district now. Well, part of the property is in the sewer district. It's not served by sewer currently.
It's across the street.
Looking at, we're looking at the extension of the sewer. There's, there are two options. One is the extension of the sewer, and the other is onsite sewage, but the onsite sewage requires, and you'd be familiar, this more than likely, the project that was done up on Hesteria land there. They actually, the county will give you a much lesser flow on that big storage building because.
Yeah.
Nobody ever, I rented storage space. I've never used the bathroom there once.
But you still, you still use, you still.
Exactly.
You still have to do the AI.
Yeah, exactly. And we, and we have that into, we have that question into the county right now to see what that flow requirement would be, because that could change the dynamic of whether we extend the sewer or not.
Where is the sewer there? Right across the street?
It's, it's just to the west. I did go over this with Michael Reichel prior to this application. There was an extension of the sewer district to incorporate, I believe, a portion of the Blackman site. I don't recall exactly when that was done, but they do have a petitioning to further extend the district. I mean, I think that's going to be a question for the Health Department. Based on the proximity to the sewer, they may just require it. It is also in the DEC WSRR, so, you know, when I spoke with Michael Reichel, he was sort of indicating that, yeah, they're likely going to have to.
Okay. To be determined.
So just to Members on Nicky's point, I just want to see where the board's at. So before, before we, you know, we have a resolution on to assume lead agency, issue a negative declaration. Would the board like to see any sort of additional soil sampling before we adopt a negative declaration?
There's no, I mean, there's no way. I mean, we could have just trying to save some more time. It's been a while.
Well, we could do concurrent.
Can we do it that way?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have no problem doing it.
If you guys are going to bring your samples in, we'll get this going, so it's concurrent.
You okay with that, Kenny?
Right, I'd just like to table it until we get results from the soil sample.
Well, we can pass it.
Potential contamin, and again, there may not, there may not be any leaks from these vehicles. We don't know that for sure, but I mean, it is an environmental factor. It is something the board should consider. So I mean, if the board's leaning towards requiring that, I would recommend we can table, I would table the resolution so that way we can, you know.
I mean, they're not old cars. They're in two, three years.
But I'm just saying, even to Marty's point, if there is a problem, right, because I've been in areas on the farm and everything else. We are directed by Board of Health on everything else. We have soil samples, lock things up, everything else, and we're just asking the same thing here. There may not be a problem, and if there's no problem, everything moves forward, you know, without any problem. But if there is a problem.
But you say you have, have a phase one?
Phase two.
Phase two.
Phase two report?
That property's been checked, up, breaking down.
You submit that to us?
Before I bought it, I would have never, you know.
You know, like I said.
Came back clear. So just those couple cars, there's no way that there's any.
I'm not sure delaying it because it might be a problem as well. If there is a spill of contamination, you're going to pay a remediation company.
Hundred percent. We're not going to stop the project.
I don't know if it's.
Actually, not delay.
You know, like I indicated when I started, I was sitting here and I looked back at my notes, and I was like, wow, like tomorrow's a year since we were here. And the zoning board is, they went through it, and we had a really good back and forth with them, and, you know, they're holding it in abeyance for this review and other things. So again, I, a point very well noted, but it's something that certainly will be a requirement, you know, going through.
And if there is an issue, we're happy to pay to clean it up. Like, we're not going to stop the project.
Well, that, that's the whole thing.
Yeah, no, a hundred percent.
So we would ask that it be allowed to proceed, but that could be a note that's added to the, you know, as a condition.
Because then it lets us keep.
So with the resolution, Greg, can we amend the resolution, you know, to findings of a, or how do you?
I mean, so that's sort of verging on a condition, negative declaration, which is not allowed under SECRE for a type-one action? So I mean, you can't really put a condition like that in for a type-one.
Well, why don't we look at the, at the phase-two report? They haven't submitted it, have they?
No, they haven't. But I mean, again, the question is not what happened prior to the owner purchasing the property. The question is what's happened on that property since then? I mean, again, I've.
There's been no mechanic work. There's been no oil changes. There's been no, like, there's nothing like that at all.
The other, the other point is that this is just, this is just one of the early hurdles. You still have to approve this, you know, so all of these things have to be confirmed and mediated in order for you to give an approval. So I would really encourage the board to allow the resolution to go as is, keep it moving, and again, we're going to, we require your preliminary site plan approval. We're going to require your final site plan approval, and you're not going to give us that unless we have those testing samples in there, right?
Or we'll get on it right away.
Well, move on. If anybody wants to make a motion to table it, they can make the motion. We'll see if it carries. If not, we'll go with the resolution presented in the packet. But are we all good with discussion on this?
Yep.
You guys good? Kenny?
Yep.
All right. Public comments on any resolution? Don't see any takers. At this time, we're going to go into executive session with our legal count to discuss summer wind farms. wind farms. So, gentlemen, you have to step out for a brief period, and we'll get you and resume. Can I get a motion to go in executive, please?
Take a motion.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, all opposed? Okay, we're going into executive.
I'll make a motion that we go into the regular business, assume the regular business of this meeting.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, welcome back to open session. We just had legal advice on summer wind farms from our attorney, and now we're going to go to resolutions.
I'll move resolution 2025-022 for 1107 Old Country Road. Any preliminary approval for the site plan application? So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Zonicki.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro.
Aye.
Mr. Bear.
Yes.
And I vote yes, the motion carries.
I'll move resolution 2025-023, classifying action pursuant to SECRE and grants farm stand approval for Free Board 23 LLC.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Zonicki.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro.
Aye.
Mr. Bear.
Yes.
And I vote yes, the motion carries.
I'll move resolution 2025-024, points east LLC minus subdivision. Resolution to schedule a public hearing in the minor subdivision application, seeking to subdivide the existing 2.5 acres, 2.05 acre parcel. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Zonicki.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro.
Aye.
Mr. Bear.
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
Resolution number 2025-025, LISM Associates LLC minor subdivision, resulting, assuming lead agency and issue negligent declaration pursuant to SECRE.
Second. Moved in second, discussion item. Greg, I know you explained it to me before, but I forgot the reasoning, that the subdivision and the zoning map are a little different. The zoning.
So the, the subdivision is essentially being carried out along the zoning district boundary line between rural corridor and the agricultural protection zone, except the proposed subdivision boundary line is 30 feet north of that zoning district line because there is a provision in the code which essentially allows you to use the, extend the less restrictive zone into the more restrictive zone. So just from a, if I was a property owner from a land use point of view, it would make sense to sort of maximize the less restrictive portion of the property.
Okay, thank you for clarification. We have, it's been moved and seconded, Mr. Zonicki.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro.
Aye.
Mr. Bear.
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
On this resolution, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to table this resolution for 940, 946 West Main Street redevelopment, if anybody else agrees.
I'll second the motion. I can do that as chairman. Moved in second, Mr. Zonicki.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
No.
Mr. Nenaro.
No.
Mr. Bear.
No.
And I vote no. And it's not because Mr. Zonicki's off mark. He's not.
No.
He wants to make sure, before the SECRE determination, that there's no problem there. It had a, it had a test, a time of purchase. The applicant is willing to do a test. In the meantime, I just not sure if it's good business to hold up the application because there might be a problem. But we will get the answer. We will find out, Kenny, and I understand your reasoning for it.
I have no problem with that.
Okay.